We have fantastic employees. They love their jobs, but they hate recognition. So we do Public Works Week just to embarrass them once a year to thank them for all they do. And I want to thank the City Council for your support for everything we do. It does make a difference in their work effort and attitude and morale. So thank you for your support.
As I read that list of responsibilities and functions that they perform, I got a little bit tired. That's a long list. You kind of wonder what they do in their spare time. Next, we have Disability Awareness Month. And I'm going to be presenting this proclamation to Society for Disabilities, Carolyn Tixera Combs. Good evening. The proclamation reads as follows. In honor of Disability Awareness Month, June 2017. Whereas the City Council is vital to fighting the stigma and discrimination that often serve as a barrier to employment, socialization, and individual well-being, and whereas there are an estimated 4,158,400 people with disabilities in the state of California alone. Over 71,640 people over the age of five with disabilities in Stanislaus County. And whereas within the next year, at least one out of eight Californians will experience a disability personally or through a family member. And whereas the Society for Disabilities will commemorate June 2017 and each June hereafter as Disability Awareness Month. Now therefore, I, signed Gary Soyseth, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Turlock and on behalf of the entire City Council and all our citizens do hereby proclaim June 2017 as Disability Awareness Month in the City of Turlock. And I urge all citizens to become fully aware of the needs and capabilities of persons with disability. Signed, Mayor Gary Soyseth, on the 23rd of May, 2017. Carolyn, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you for reading it.
Do you have a comment?
I do have a comment. How did you know? And I bring a photographer as well. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, citizens of Turlock, thank you. And on behalf of the 71,640 people in Stanislaus County, they thank you also. This year, Society for Disabilities celebrates 70 years of enhancing the quality of life for people with disabilities. We actually started because of polio. And as you can tell, you don't see polio very much these days. We've changed what needs to happen in our community, which is basically the social, recreational, and educational programs. I personally like to think our organization creates smiles, not just for our participants, but on the faces of their families as well. Our programs provide people with disabilities an opportunity to participate in activities that you and I probably take for granted, whether it's adaptive winter ski, which our winter ski team is really pretty much the city of Turlock, by the way, and we're grateful for them, our water ski bowling, bike camp, prom, top soccer, ice skating, day on the farm, miracle league baseball. We all see growth and inclusion in our participants because we really try to focus on the ability part of our participants. But mainly for parents who never thought their child with a disability would be included in these programs, their smiles are often bigger than that on the child. Society for Disabilities, I mentioned polio, and that started our durable medical equipment loan closet, which happens to be the largest in the Central Valley. Any given day, we have over a quarter of a million dollars of medical equipment on loan here in the county. And yes, there are smiles when someone is given a walker, or a wheelchair, or even a hospital bed. These smiles are created by the generosity of the community because we receive no government funding. We totally rely on the continued support of the community. And thank you so much for reading the proclamation and reminding everyone the quantity of people that do have a disability in this community. We greatly appreciate this. Thank you for your help of increasing awareness of disabilities. And please look for your picture on our Facebook page. And look for our Facebook page the whole month because we do highlight something every day, either what it means to a person for participating in one of our programs, or for you to have empathy for someone with a disability. We will give you ideas for that. So please like us on Facebook. Thank you very much. Thank you.
What a joy it is to see people that are making a difference, to have the opportunity to recognize them for what they do. For the people in our community is very gratifying. So thank you again, Carolyn. You may regret showing my picture on your Facebook page. I tend to break cameras.
No, we're above white.
Okay, good. All right. Good. And now recognition. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to invite Major Kelly Cross and the shooters of Turlock High School Navy JROTC air rifle team. As we recognize them this evening, I'm going to call Major Cross forward and read the proclamation. Why don't you all come forward, gents and lady? Yeah, I caught that. The jingle jangle. Got to love those medals. Congratulations. Gives me a great deal of pleasure to read this certificate. Certificate of Recognition. May it be known that this certificate is awarded to Turlock High School Navy JROTC. The Turlock City Council is exceedingly honored to recognize and congratulate Turlock High School's Navy JROTC, who competed in the National Air Rifle Championship, March 25, 2017, and subsequently took the national championship title. Best sporter-class air rifle team in America. The first California team in this category's history to win this prestigious award. On behalf of our entire City Council and the City of Turlock, I extend our sincere congratulations on this outstanding achievement. In witness whereof, the Mayor Gary Soyseth has set his hand and caused the seal of City of Turlock to be affixed this 23rd day of March, 2017. Congratulations. Congratulations, each one of you. I think that the people rising to their feet indicates, or should indicate to you all, how we recognize the achievement that you just made. That's quite an accomplishment. I'd like to call your boss. I'd like to call Major Cross up and present the certificate. It's actually going to all of you, but then I understand you've got a couple of introductions that you'd like to make and show a show, or was that for me later?
I got a presentation.
Okay, good. I'll get out of the way then.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Major Cross.
Okay, first of all, a lot of people don't know what we do and who we are. So I just want to kind of give the community an idea of what we do and where we've been.
Your command voice is good, buddy.
I can do louder if you want.
We're recording.
All right. Sorry. So what we wanted to tell you is a little bit about us and why we're here. And number one, we develop tomorrow's citizens today, and that's our goal. Our goal isn't a recruitment. We don't go in the military. You don't have any requirements. It's to develop good citizens, and that's what we want. This is me, Major Kelly D. Cross, United States Marine Corps retired. I'm a business major. I got an MBA. I flew F-4s, F-18s for the Marine Corps. That's fighter jets, if you don't know. That's what it looks like. There's also another instructor, Lieutenant Commander Montanez. He's degrees in physics. He also has an MBA. And he is a submariner. He's a nuclear engineer on submarines. That's his background. So that's the background of the two instructors they have that they have to deal with all the time. What do we have? Actually, we have three national teams. I coach the air rifle team. You don't want a submariner teaching air rifle. You'd rather have a marine. Anyway, but he does teach orienteering, and he teaches the academics. So yes, we have a physics guy teaching academics. Each of the cadets average about 15 hours of community service. So we're out there in the community. You might see them in uniform and doing stuff, and we like to do community events for you guys. Leadership billets, they actually get real-time experience. We have a CO. Actually, he's standing back there. He was our CO right there. He also, and we'll talk a little bit about him, he received a ROTC scholarship, so he'll be going for a full ride. So we look forward to that. Platoon commanders, they also get administration, public affairs. They run our websites. They do operations and training. We have one cadet, actually, she was a supply officer at one point, and she ran about $130,000 worth of supplies, ordering parts, issuing stuff out, and returning it back in. So we have that kind of experience. We've given out a scholarship, one scholarship per year for the last four years in a row. It's about 180,000 scholarship. This young lady here knows Bryson Curtin. He was our first one. He's at Norwich University in Vermont. He's going to be a Marine Corps officer. He's getting ready to go to OCS. Tomlinson down in San Diego. Colby McCann, last year, he's at UC Berkeley right now in the engineering program. And Cody, again, if you'd stand up, Cody Jacobson, he's going to Marquette University for engineering to be a naval officer also. So, good job on that. Thanks. Three-position air rifle. We have Adriana Valencia, our team captain. She was also last year's California State Champion. We also hold NRA record, indoor record, which we'll talk about. We also have, these are the three seniors. Nicholas McKeon, he was a captain as a sophomore and then stepped down. His sophomore year, he was the 2015 California State Champion. And then we have Dorian McIntosh, also another senior. He is this year's California State Champion. And then we have Ramadip Singh, who's a sophomore. This is only his second year shooting, so he'll be our team captain this coming year. So Ramadip's on there. We also have Felicity Spray. She couldn't make it today, but she is, what happens is, is you have five people on a team, but only four get to shoot at any one time. We're the 2017 national champions. It's a big deal, so we're really excited about that. Last year, we were the NRA champions. Actually, last year and the year before. This year, we set an NRA national record in shooting. We also, Nicholas McKeon also set an offhand, that's standing up, national record for the NRA. So, good job. And those are the California State Champions. So a lot of accomplishments. That's us in there. If you look at it, they're all shoulder-to-shoulder matches, and they're electronic. You can actually watch the national champions on your computer at home, which is pretty exciting to do for everything. And they have a big banquet there. And that's in Anniston, Alabama, where we were at. This is our national academic team, and they went to Daytona Beach, Florida for the national academic competition, orienteering. This year was in Atlanta, Georgia, also. One of our highlights for the community that we do is the Veterans Ball. We started off utilizing the War Memorial, you know, when that was available to us. We used that for two years in a row. This is an event that veterans in your community, it's for Stanislaus veterans, to come and break bread with each other, and we cut the birthday cake for each branch of service there. It's for their veterans and their spouses. The community has come together and has donated tables for those veterans. So last year, all the veterans got to come for free, which we're really excited about that. And it's sponsored by you guys, the community, so we want to say thank you. There was 250 veterans and spouses this year. Nine of those were World War II veterans, and we've covered all conflicts so far from World War II all the way up to the current war. Our previous guest speakers, Mike Anderson, he works for our local congressman. The mayor was our second one. We had Megan Bruce, who was a former JROTC commander. We stood up in 2003, and she was one of the first commanders here, and she's a combat veteran, disabled veteran now, from the United States Marine Corps. And Pete Butler, he's our guest speaker this year, and he works for the congressman as the military attache. So it's a great, great community effort. Do I have any questions at all? All right. Covered a lot of stuff.
Well, I'd like to thank you all. It's quite an achievement. It's one that you'll remember for your lives as you prepare for the next chapter. Are these yours?
Yeah. Thank you.
So onward and upward. Okay, we have two presentations this evening. First, by the Downtown Property Association, their annual report. Molly. Sorry, that's kind of blended in with the sentence there. Sorry. Molly Amant. And?
Michael Camara, President of the Organization. I'm just going to introduce us real quick. There are many in the community that are not familiar with the Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association. It's a bit of a mouthful. We prefer TDPOA. That works much better. Essentially, we manage the affairs of property and the Business Improvement District. Sort of a mouthful. We coordinate and represent the interests of property owners downtown and attend to issues of physical beautification downtown. We partner with different organizations that Molly will go in depth on regarding the Festival of Lights, the Christmas parade, as well as the Fourth of July event that's held downtown. So I defer here to Molly Amant. She was taken on as our official, permanent organizational director this February, this past February, and she's very adept, very capable, and we're pleased, more than pleased, with her commitment and dedication levels. So my understanding is that Councilmember Black and Mayor Soyseth is with us here?
They're actually on the phone. They're coming to us from the cloud.
From the cloud, okay. Excellent. Okay, excellent. So I'll give you Molly here.
Thank you, Michael. I'm Molly. I'm the Executive Director of TDPOA. I just was going to go through this pretty quickly. There's not much changes from last year, as I understand. When I did submit the report, there is a change to the Board of Directors. We no longer have Troy Thorson. He termed out. So we added Jeff Chapman and Randy Woods to our board. So that's a little change there at the top. We did take on a new director, which is I, and that was probably the biggest change from last year to this year. Also, we took on a new contractor, which was bidded out to different agencies, and Stewart Property, Stewart, I'm sorry, Landscaping is the one who won the bid, and they're incredible. They're very, very nice to work with. We also are continuing our partnership with the Turlock Garden Club. If you see any of the pots downtown, that's all done by volunteer by the garden club that we have here in Turlock, and they look incredible. We are still standardizing our banner pole program, which is taking off, actually, this year we have a manual medical center. They are doing a six-month contract, and every year we have the Stanislaus County Fair, which their banners look very nice downtown. They're very colorful. As for the financials of TDPOA, it were very sound. About a unrestricted reserve of approximately $211,000 and a restricted reserve of about $60,000. And then just partnerships with other agencies downtown. For our events, we partner with Paul's Glass, the glass boss, for Fourth of July, and we've recently just started partnering with the City for Festival of Lights, which has worked really, really well for us, and we appreciate that. So that's all I have, unless we have any questions.
Questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And the next presentation contains a name that I've heard and that I know and that I've spoken with, but I've never met, Lourdes Perez. How are you? Lourdes, welcome.
All right, thank you.
You bet. And Kanat Tavet.
You'll remember me from the Heal Cities campaign.
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and the members of the community. Thank you for having us. I'm here with my colleague, Lourdes Perez, who is a trustee at the Series Unified School District, also works for the Center for Human Services. And we have a certain number of the community members to make a plea and petition for the council to actually study and consider the adoption of an ordinance that I will briefly elaborate in the next few minutes. I work for a statewide nonprofit organization based out of Davis. We have offices in Southern California, Stockton, Oakland, Folsom, and Davis. We fight childhood obesity and diabetes through research and advocacy at the state and local levels. We're funded by different resources, some of which are Kaiser, Robert Wood Johnson, California Endowment. But most recently, we received funding from the American Heart Association under the auspices of their program Voices for Healthy Kids to run a statewide, local advocacy campaign at a handpicked number of cities in California. And Turlock, Modesto happened to be two of those cities. And we're working with the community residents and the councils to pass an ordinance. So what does the ordinance do is wherever in a restaurant a kid's combo meal is served, and the default beverage is a sugary beverage, the ordinance makes that sugary beverage water or milk and leaves the parent the choice to still order the sugary beverage at no extra cost. So this is an effort to curb marketing to zero to 10-year-olds. And we have some community members who want to make a plea too, but we've been reaching out to the community over the past five months, and we've collected nearly 500 signatures supporting this, and notable organizations also within the community are supporting this effort. So again, the plea is to have the council study and consider this at a nearby future date.
I will turn it over to my peer.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. As Kanat stated, my name is Lourdes Perez. I'm here on behalf of Center for Human Services. It's a local nonprofit with programs and services supporting and strengthening families throughout Stanislaus County. So we have enlisted numerous supports, mainly, I want to mention a few, Turlock Collaborative, composed of about 25 organizations, from educational institutions to nonprofits, religious or faith-based organizations, and others who really focus their work on supporting the Turlock community and its people. So we have invited community residents who support. We would like to invite them to come here and present their plea. I will be translating for each one of them, and really appreciate the time you've given us this evening. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Erika Jubiar. Vivo aquí en la ciudad de Turlock. Y estoy aquí para apoyar la petición de que todos los restaurantes ofrezcan en el combo para niños bebidas saludables como lo es el agua embotellada y la leche. Esto con la razón de evitar el alto consumo en bebidas azucaradas. Como madre de familia y adulto, me siento con la responsabilidad de ver por la salud y el bienestar de mis hijos, así como de mi comunidad. Gracias por su tiempo y espero su apoyo en esta petición.
Good afternoon. My name is Erika Jubiar. I live in Turlock. My grandfather passed away at the age of 67 due to diabetes. The reason I am here today is to enlist your support to have restaurants offer healthy beverage with kids' combo meals, like water or milk, to reduce the consumption of sugary sweetened beverages. As an adult and mother, I have a responsibility to ensure the health and well-being of my children and my community. Thank you for your time, and I hope you support this petition.
Muy buenas tardes. Tengan todos ustedes. Mi nombre es María Ortiz y formo parte del grupo de promotoras de Turlock. El día de hoy traigo una petición para todos ustedes, respetados miembros de este grupo municipal, de este consejo municipal. La comunidad se está uniendo porque queremos cambios en las bebidas que se dan en los restaurantes de comida rápida. Nuestra preocupación es porque hoy en día estamos consumiendo mucho azúcar en sodas y en bebidas azucaradas, lo cual ha ocasionado un alto índice de obesidad en los niños y enfermedades como diabetes y otro tipo de consecuencias que les traen desde muy pequeños. Yo sé que para todos ustedes es muy importante la salud de nuestros hijos y agradezco de antemano su voto y su apoyo. Muchas gracias por escucharnos a todos nosotros y que tengan una excelente tarde.
Good afternoon. My name is María Ortiz, and I am a member of the Promotoras Group of Turlock. Today, I am here to ask council members to consider this petition. This community came together because we would like to make change of the drinks being offered in the fast-food restaurants and other restaurants. We are worried because we are consuming too much sugar in sodas and other sugary drinks, which have contributed to childhood obesity, diabetes, and other illnesses. I know that you, that the health of our children is important to you, and I appreciate your support. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Adriana Jiménez, y vivo en la 1571 North Tulley Road, Turlock. Yo estoy muy preocupada por la alta cifra de diabetes en los niños. Estoy preocupada por la salud de mis hijos y necesitamos, creo que necesitamos cambios en la hora de las bebidas azucaradas, refrescos, y jugos. Les pido su apoyo para que haya cambios para el servicio de la comunidad. Muchas gracias. Que tengan buenas tardes.
My name is Adriana. I live at 1517 Tulley Road in Turlock. I am worried about the high incidence of children with diabetes. Therefore, we need to make changes now regarding the consumption of our beverages. This is very important to me because I have three children and family. Thank you for your time and your attention. Have a great evening.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Ramos. Yo vivo aquí por la 333 North Tor, in Street, Turlock. Es esencial para mí enseñarles a mis hijos la importancia de tener una vida saludable. Tengo cuatro hijos y cuatro nietos, y me interesa su salud y bienestar, y que sean buenos ciudadanos y aporten al país, al igual que el de mi comunidad. Les hago la petición en nombre de mi madre, que tiene diabetes, y para otros jóvenes y niños que están siendo afectados. De antemano, les agradezco su tiempo. Gracias.
Hello, my name is María Ramos. I reside at 333 North Tor Street in Turlock. It is essential for me to teach my children the importance of leading a healthy life. I have four children and four grandchildren. I am concerned about their health and well-being. I want them to be productive citizens and contribute positively to our community and the nation as a whole. I make this petition on behalf of my mother, who suffers from diabetes, on behalf of youth and children of this community who are being affected. Thank you for your time this evening.
Hello, my name is Madeline. I am from Turlock, California. This matters, and it's very important to me because people around us have diabetes, and we have the power to stop by letting, stop letting the number increase by setting the kids' drink by default to water. the kids' drink by default to water or milk. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Alexis and I'm here from Turlock, California. I'm here to tell each one of you that we have the power to make a change by serving healthier beverages and kids' meals. And each additional sugary drink a child consumes per day, their chance of becoming overweight increases by 60%. So we should change the default kids' drink to water or milk. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Christian and I am from Turlock, California, where I was born and raised. The ordinance matters to me because 39.7%, which is basically one in three children in the community are overweight or obese. Also, my grandma and uncles are suffering from type 2 diabetes, and the number of people with diabetes and obesity will only grow, and we should help stop the growing rate by setting the default kids' drinks to water or milk. Thank you.
Thank you for listening. Just to wrap it up, with 10-year-olds, giving them the healthy choice, water or milk as the default, and should the parent ask for a sugary beverage, like I do for my son after he runs for 10 miles, I still get that beverage at no extra cost. And there's no fiscal impact on businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members.
Thank you all very much. Thanks for being here this evening, I appreciate it. Still waiting for that phone call. We don't have any special briefings this evening. Staff updates. Who's gonna do it tonight? Ah, there she is.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Glenna Jackson. I'm the shelter supervisor for the Turlock Animal Shelter. I'm here to present to you the Pet of the Month for June. Pet Adoption Fees are sponsored by TMAPs, which they include the spay, neuter, microchip, first vaccine, rabies vaccine, and the license if you're a City of Turlock resident. This is a great deal to get that family pet. Previous Pets of the Month, we have two this time because we missed a council meeting. So Owen from April was adopted to this lovely family that had three daughters, so he's very happy to be the other man of the house. This family is quite excited to get him. And little Cooper is Pet of the Month for May, because we weren't able to present before, that's why we had one for May. This is Pet of the Month for June. This is number 5-13. His name is Dylan. He's a dachshund mix. He's a neutered male, so he's already to go home with you if you want to come out and adopt him tomorrow. We open from 10 to 2. He's approximately 10 months old. We are working on some house training on him right now and getting him to walk on a leash. So these are things we're trying to get you a head start there. Please see his video on our Facebook page to see how he is in live action. For the month of June, so starting June 1st, our microchips are going to be $5. And we started this promotion, we usually do this around 4th of July. For those of you who don't know, what happens is the dogs get really scared from the fireworks that go on, and fireworks happen about two weeks before July, the 4th of July comes up and go after that. So our recovery rate to get these animals home really increases by at least 80% when the animals have a microchip because collars come off and they get outside their normal scope where they leave. So with the fireworks, they continue to bolt and bolt and bolt, so they get farther from home. So this is, does it only happen for the Turlock residents only? And purchase of a city dog license is required for your dogs if they're over four months of age, but you can get the limit of three dogs and three cats, so this is a really good deal to take advantage of this. So again, the Turlock Animal Services is located 801 South Walnut. We're open Monday through Saturday, 10 to 2. Remember me that we are going to be closed this Friday, I mean this Saturday and Monday for Memorial Holiday. And if you guys have any questions, you can always call us and we'll be happy to walk you through that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for introducing those fur babies to us.
Thank you.
Okay, Public Safety Chief, Amorfar.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I do want to point out with our supervisor, Glenna Jackson for Animal Services, that microchip is extremely important. Many of you may have seen the news reports in the newspaper regarding Trixie. She found her, we found her owner because of a microchip. So on the June 13th council meeting, we'll be coming back with a video of the full travel and the event, so you guys will get to see that. But the microchip is extremely important, especially if you don't, you love your animals, you don't want to lose them, and if they do get lost during the 4th of July, very good chance you'll get them back. With that, I, council and my fellow citizens, on the back table, there are two documents back there. One is our quarterly report and one is our staff report for April. Please feel free to grab them. Council members and Vice Mayor, for time purposes, I provided you both, but I'd like to just go over the April report rather than the quarterly, unless you would like me to do the quarterly. There's a lot of information here and I'll hit the highlights for you if that meets with your approval. Great, we'll start with the monthly report for April staff update. You'll notice on the top, we have our three calls, top three calls for service. For 2016, year-to-date, we showed suspicious person disturbances and disturbances verbal. 2017, it didn't change, but we did, so far, we have had a decrease in suspicious persons versus same time last year of 7% and disturbances, a decrease of 10%. However, the verbal portions of the disturbances did increase. Burglaries by type, this is very important. We look at these figures for 2016. Auto burglary was the top. You look at residential burglary right afterwards, commercial burglary and burglary other, then you move to 2017 and you can see the correlation are decreases. We have a 19% decrease in auto burglary, 40% decrease in residential burglary. You do see an increase in the commercial burglary of 16% and a decrease of burglary others. The commercial burglary increase is going to stay with us for a little while. If you remember in the previous council meetings, we discussed the rash of burglaries we suffered from Modesto series in Turlock in regards to the dentist offices, which we were successfully able to team up and make arrests on. So that's why that number is there. Part one crimes for 2017, our larceny still is the top of the three, burglary, and then followed by auto theft. All three of them currently are showing decreases for this fiscal year or for this calendar year of 12% decrease for larceny, 30% decrease on burglary, and 22% decrease on auto theft. When we look at our arrests compared from last year, you will see that in April of 2016, we had 1,336. In 2017, we have had an increase in arrests, which is about a 14% increase. And what's interesting with that is if you look down to our, well, let's go ahead and hit our response times, you will see this is part of the council's policy and goals, objective to reduce our response times. And we're continuing to be challenged in doing that, but we are striving and making headwind on that. You will see in 2016, our priority one calls, we had 215 of them for the same time at a seven-minute and four-second response. In 2017, we increased to 261, which brought our times up by 3/10ths of a second. So the numbers are staying right where they're at, and we're hoping with our new CAT RMS system, when we do go into effect sometime next year, we'll be able to get a much more accurate number. Service demands, you will see that calls for service for year-to-date, we are at 15,063. That's a 3% increase, that's police services. If you look at our self-initiated calls, this is where the officers aren't called. This is where the officers are utilizing their available time, that's either driving from a call to a call or any available time they have besides answering a call for service that comes from our dispatch center. In 2016, from January 3rd, we had 17,771 calls. This year, we're already at 19,112, an 8% increase, which correlates with your increase in arrests. I added something for the purposes of this council and for our community. We show citations issued and it's extremely important. I wanted to add it to this report, it wasn't on previous reports. And the reason I'm adding that is it's part of our educational process in regards to the national issue in regards to traffic collisions and traffic-related deaths to our pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. And it's extremely important that we bring you these statistics because while we educate the public in what they should be doing, how they should be driving, how they should be paying attention when they're walking on the sidewalks, not watching their cellphones when they step into the street, bicyclists stopping at stop signs, et cetera, there does come a time when there is enforcement necessary. So I wanted to show that we are attempting, besides all the education that we're doing, all our social media efforts, we are still out there and attempting to issue the citations. However, you will notice that we had a 36% decrease from year-to-date from 17 to 16, and that's because our traffic unit, while it's only two, for the first part of this year, we're actually down to one. We had a sergeant leave to become a teacher, and that's great for the school districts, not good for us. And we're in the process of training one of the officers, which left only one officer to handle traffic citations. But what you will notice is our patrol units picked up the slack. Even though we still had that 30% decrease, that's a decrease on the traffic unit side, our patrol units picked up the slack. So on top of the self-initiated activities you're seeing there of 17,000, the citations, they're also giving, this is where I say this is 150% effort. Moving from that, I also added primary traffic collisions as a factor. I think it's important that we understand that. When the police department does a police report or an accident or collision, they're not accidents, they're collision reports, it's because there was an injury or there's some serious other issues that are there in regards to primary collision factors, and that's associated with the vehicle code. So when I say primary collision factor, this is the reason the collision occurred through our investigation. So the top one for both years, 2016 in April and 2017 in April, is red light violations. The next one is unsafe left-turning yield, it's identical to the year previous. And then there's a change from April 2016 to April 2017, where 2016 is speeding, 2017 is unsafe lane change without signaling. All of these are preventable. All of these were choices made by individuals either inadvertently because they weren't paying attention or because they were in a rush. So a message to the public, drive safely, arrive alive. That's the main subject. I tell our officers, you know, when we drive code three, lights and siren, we're only going to get there three to four minutes sooner than anyone else following the rules of the road. Seriously, that's about an average, three to four minutes sooner. But if we don't get there, we're not helping anyone. And so it goes to the general public. We need to operate safely so we arrive and we take care of our families. Going, I know there's a lot of information, so I'm sorry. I included on the back part of this, the districts. These are the election districts for Turlock, and I wanted to indicate the types of crimes that are occurring. District one, you can review that as number one, a suspicious person, disturbances. District two is disturbances is number one, suspicious person is number two. And District three reverses, and District four is a repeat of District three. Special promotions, special deployment efforts, we did have our regional apprehension team, operation corps officers, T-NET detectives, probation officers. We've searched six locations, five subjects have been arrested, 39 additional tips have been made through that operation. We also handled a tip off of our tip line, which is working rather well, in where we were able to identify several issues going on in the neighborhood. Search warrants were conducted and arrests were made. So those are some extra efforts that are being put forth by combining our special operations teams. I'll just go ahead and move down to our crime prevention efforts. This is our corps officers conducting community outreach with several neighborhood watch groups to offer assistance with our neighborhood meetings. You'll notice that on our Facebook page, our corps officers did go out and reach out to one of our school sites at West Main and Sodquist and assisted in the students going to special field trips, crossing the street because of some safety issues there, and we were able to provide that service for them. If you look at our social media, you'll see that our social media is going through the roof. Our Facebook is at 8,600 likes. We've reached 162,700 people. Our Twitter account is at 5,149. Instagram is rising, 31% increase, we're at 879. YouTube is also rising. These are all new, all new social media aspects that we're taking on. And for those of you that are in the audience, like Turlock Police Department, I have my own Facebook page, we are making an attempt to get as much information out to the general public as we can, and we do it by posting out on Facebook. We'll tell you to stay away from this roadway, we'll give you warnings, we'll give you public service announcements. No more do you have to wait a week to get that information. We're going to put it out as fast as we can. With that, I'll end with the part one crimes. You'll see that on the majority of them, they are decreases. The forcible rapes have increased. I will tell you that with rapes, we are finding, and it's a national trend, that you usually know the person, whether it's from a party, whether it's, whatever the incident is. So a majority of these, we have individuals identified, and I can't really go into much more on that. But you'll see all the rest of the crimes declining, with the exception of the aggravated assaults, and a lot of those are your drug-related incidences. Even though some drugs are fraction-based now, they're still assaulting each other for it. With that, open to any questions that you have?
Any questions, comments? Yes.
Thanks. As it relates to the speeding and, you know, vehicle versus pedestrian, I was driving, I don't remember exactly what city it was on, on the way to Vacaville, and I saw a sign and it said, "Save lives, not minutes." Ironically, it was right next to a cemetery, but which I thought was kind of funny, the placement of it. But I thought it was a great sign because I was not speeding, but was kind of in a rush to get through that area, and it sort of, it made me think about it and slow down a little. So I thought, if there's something that we can work on to seem like a simple little sign that we can put, and just to kind of raise awareness.
I'll defer to, well, I can answer that. If you drive around Turlock, especially on Monta Vista right now, there are sign posters just going up, electronic signage, just because we have our graduations coming up. We have a task force with Vice Mayor DeHart that we've put together with the assistance of the city manager. We're incorporating the school districts, the university is working hand-in-hand with us, and we're working on getting out an educational public service information blast through our Facebook pages, both webpage and Facebook, both the City of Turlock, the Police Department, and CSUS. So we're trying to get the information out. We also have several other plans in place for electronic signage moving about the city. We have other plans, so if you see a police car and a sign that says, "Slow down," and you see the police car in front of it, you're more than likely going to get a ticket if you go past it over the speed limit. I've made it real clear to our officers, if they see the violation, we need to start citing. You know, we've given the education and quite frankly, people are making the wrong choice.
Thanks so much, Chief, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief Taloni.
Good evening, Arnold Mayor Soiseth, City Council. Turlock Fire Department briefing for March 23rd to May 17, 2017 is as follows. We have our red booklet for you, statistics. Please reference pages two, three, and four of your binder. On page two, total calls by district. Station one had 261 calls and three arson's. Station two, 231 calls, no arson. Station three, 244 calls with one arson. Station four, 244 calls, no arson. We did eight mutual aid calls given. Total calls by fire station. Station one, 280 calls, we gave two mutual aids. Station two did 217 calls, we gave one mutual aid. Station three, 250 calls with no mutual aid. Station four, 241 calls, we gave a mutual aid once. Motor vehicle crashes with injuries, 33 in that time period. Total calls by incident group, we had 43 total fires. The highlights are building fires were six, cooking fires were four, passenger vehicle fires were five, natural vegetation fires three, grass fires four, outside rubbish fires eight, dumpster fires seven, outside storage fire one, outside equipment fires, eight, dumpster fires, seven, outside storage fire, one, outside equipment fire, one, unauthorized burning was two, and good-intent calls were three. Our rescue and emergency medical service calls, EMS, six hundred and nineteen calls in that timeframe. Sixty were assist invalid or lift assists. Public safety service calls were seven. Animal rescues were three. Persons in distress were three. Three power line down calls, six false alarms, smoke detector activation due to malfunctions, four, smoke detector activations unintentional, eleven. Detector activations unintentional, five. Alarm system activation unintentional, ten. On page five, we provided a pie chart reflecting the percentages of the types of calls, of total calls. On page six, we have a pie chart reflecting the numbers of calls by district. Our operations division highlights are located on pages seven and eight. Training highlights are on pages nine and ten for your review. Fire prevention highlights are located on page eleven. In conclusion, social media on page seventeen is three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven total likes. Neighborhood services highlights begin on page twelve. Neighborhood services completed five hundred and fifty various inspections, including refuse, tow weeds, and operable vehicles, graffiti, and vehicles parked on grass. We removed eighty-one abandoned shopping carts, removed graffiti from a hundred and nine locations, and two hundred and forty-six illegal snipe signs were removed. Abandoned and operable vehicles were two hundred and eighteen, were orange-tagged, or sent a ten-day letter for tow or removal by owner. Ten thousand two hundred and forty pounds of debris and trash were taken to scavenger from various locations throughout the city. And lastly, neighborhood services participated in Love Turlock, and removed twenty-five hundred and forty pounds of refuse from throughout the city. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Impressive summary of information, both chiefs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Very well. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Time now for public participation. Do we have any cards? Have any been submitted? Okay. It's not necessary. If you'd like to address the council during this public participation period, on items pertaining, to items not, on issues not pertaining to items on the agenda, you're free to do so. If it pertains to an item that is on the agenda, we just ask that you can find your comments to that time period devoted to those. Are there any items that you'd like to bring up at this point? Okay, seeing none. Declaration of conflicts of interest and disqualifications. Clicking right, clicking left, none noted. Mayor, Councilmember Booblack?
None from here.
Okay. And, Councilmember Booblack?
I don't have any.
Thank you very much. Okay. No conflicts of interest disclosure. Top ten maximum contributors are noted in the agenda as listed. Come consent calendar. What is the will of the council? Okay. We have movement by Councilmember Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Esquer. Clerk, please call the roll.
Adopting the consent calendar. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Consent calendar passes. We have, should I say, we don't have final readings this evening, no public hearings. Moving on to scheduled matters. Item A, request to affirm or modify the community events and activities grant funding as submitted by the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Committee. And, oh my gosh. Somebody's going to tell us what this is all about.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I inherit this evening seeking affirmation or modification to the community events and activities grant funding. Grant funding of the community events and activities program is anticipated to be budgeted at forty-six thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen. The grant funding is derived from the transit occupancy tax that hotel guests pay when staying here in Turlock. For the current funding cycle, eleven organizations presented on fifteen events at the April twelfth Parks, Arts, and Recreation Committee meeting, resulting in a total funding request of sixty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. The commission scored each event based on information contained in the application and gathered during the presentation. As directed, staff tallied the score sheets and ranked the events by their cumulative average for council's review and consideration, which you have in front of you as Exhibit A. The following is the order in which the grants ranked. Turlock Community Theater seventeen eighteen show headline, headliner, eighty-five point six seven percent. Stanislaus County Fair, eighty-five point one four percent. Assyrian Church of the East Assyrian Festival, eighty-four point four three percent. Turlock Horsemen's Club Junior Rodeo, eighty-four point two nine percent. WGAS Motorsport Entertainment Fall Nationals, eighty-four point two nine percent. Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association, Fourth of July, eighty-four percent. WGAS Motorsport Entertainment Spring Nationals, eighty-three point one four percent. Assyrian American Civic Club New Year's Celebrations, eighty-two point seven one percent. Assyrian American Club State Convention, eighty-two point seven one percent. MD Event Productions Brew Fest, eighty-two point seven one percent. Central California Assyrian Student Youth Association Softball Showdown, eighty-one, excuse me, eighty-one point seven one percent. Carnegie Arts Book Fair, seventy-nine point one four percent. Turlock Journal Senior Showcase, seventy-eight point one four percent. Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association Festival of Lights, seventy-six point four three percent. Tur, excuse me, Turlock Journal's Women's Leadership Roundtable, sixty-eight point five percent. Based on the commission's ranking and the forty-six thousand dollars budgeted, the top eleven events can be fully funded, with the twelfth event receiving partial funding of one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. The three remaining events would not receive funding. Council has the discretion to affirm the grants as requested, as recommended by the commission, or modify the amount to any or all of the requests. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Council comments here? Yes. Councilmember Jacob?
Thanks. Not so much a question on the specific funding or the applicants, but I noticed that all of the cumulative averages, the highest score is eighty-five point six seven percent. And on the scoring sheet, at the bottom of the scoring sheet, it says eighty-eight to a hundred means that the event aligns well with the goals of the community grants programs, supporting information is measurable and complete. Eighty-seven to seventy is the event has the potential to positively impact the community but may be lacking in some areas. So, I actually helped write the scoring sheet. I guess this is more of a comment that we might, might be prudent to look at editing it a bit, because according to this, all of the events are in the second category, that they have the potential to positively impact the community but may be lacking in some areas. So, if we can maybe rework that scoring sheet a little bit to more accurately reflect, I don't think that all of these events are necessarily, should be falling in that range.
Definitely.
I appreciate your work, Amber, on this. Good work. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments from the community? Any questions or comments? Okay. Bringing it back to council, what's the will of the council? Okay, we have a motion moved by Councilmember Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Esker. Clerk, could you read the motion and call the roll, please?
Affirming the community events and activities grant funding as submitted by the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Thank you. The motion passes. You're a busy lady this evening.
I am.
Okay. Schedule matter number B, request to determine the closure for the Turlock Pentecost Annual Parade hosted by the Turlock Pentecost Association is exempt from the provisions of California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and to approve a special event permit application for the Turlock Pentecost Annual Parade hosted by the Turlock Pentecost Association, authorize the associated closure of Gear Road between Canal Drive, for pedestrian, excuse me, between Canal Drive and Northern Golden State Boulevard for pedestrian safety on Sunday, June eleventh, two thousand seventeen, at specified times, and authorize the city manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions on the street closure.
An internal meeting with the special event committee was held, where the history of the event was further discussed with the committee, as well as the impacts of the event, both to the community as well as city staff. Given that we had just completed an event where we had heard concerns of Main Street's closures, the special event committee came up with an alternative route that was then proposed to the applicant. This route included a closure of eastbound West Canal between North Golden State and Gear Road, and eastbound East Canal between Gear Road and Bonita Avenue. This alternative route was presented to the applicant in a meeting on May second, to which the applicant expressed concerns. The applicant's concerns were centered around the tradition of the longstanding event here in the community, as well as a means of notifying the public who attend the event, maybe not are involved in the event, but notifying those who come to watch the event. They're used to that being on Main Street. During this meeting, a second alternative route was established. Staff and the applicant felt that this was a compromise between the originally proposed route, as well as one that will lessen the impact of the surrounding neighborhoods and the community as a whole. This route includes the original, most of the original requested closure. However, instead of traveling Center Street all the way down to Main Street, it travels Center to Mitchell Avenue, avoiding the closure of Main Street. This option seemed reasonable to the applicant, as it was agreed that staff would gather the costs with this associated closure. Those costs were given to the applicant, where it was the understanding that he would then take those costs to the board, have further discussion, and then give us a confirmation if this alternative route would be okay. We did hear from the applicant, and it was determined that the Pentecost Board had agreed to the second alternative route using Mitchell Avenue. The street closure request of this alternative is as follows. Gear Road between Canal Drive and North Golden State Boulevard. Lincoln Avenue between Gear Road and North Thor Street. North Thor between Lincoln Avenue and Monroe Avenue. Monroe Avenue between North Thor and North Center Street. North Center between Monroe Avenue and Mitchell Avenue. Mitchell Avenue between North Center Street and East Canal Drive. Bonita Avenue between East Canal Drive and East Main. Lyons Avenue between East Main and Rose Street, and eastbound East Canal Drive between Olive Avenue and Gear Road. I would like to ask Wayne York to come and speak from an engineering standpoint on this event and the proposed routes.
Mr. York, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I wanted to provide a little bit of background as to some of the traffic engineering reasons why the recommendation was made for the route modification. And to do that, it probably would be helpful to provide a little bit of context. With, as you know, about a year ago, the special event permit process was implemented, and as part of that process, we did a comprehensive review of everything associated with that. We wanted to make sure that, as we applied traffic control requirements on applicants, we were doing it equally across occasions. That was not the case before, when you had some events going through one process and others through another. So we wanted to make sure that we standardized the application of traffic control requirements. We also wanted to make sure that those requirements were consistent with state guidance, as listed in the California MUTCD. We also wanted to make sure that we were consistent with our own policies, and got the approval of the RMA, that we were doing things in a manner that was consistent with their guidance as well. So after going through that process, we developed a, enhanced requirements for traffic control that practically speaking results in more barricades when we have hard closures of streets for events like this. So I wanted to provide that as a little bit of context. So what is shown on the screen right now is the proposed route. I'll call it the compromised route, that was using Mitchell. And, so the routes that, this visually describes what Amber just read off to you, where it starts over near Gear, and travels down around, goes to the Sacred Heart Church, before traveling back along Canal Drive in a big counterclockwise loop. And so some of the concerns that led us to propose an alternate route, as opposed to the larger, more traditional route, had to do with a couple different things. One of them is the council's direction for closures on Main Street. That was certainly part of that discussion. We wanted to remain sensitive to falling in the direction of council there. The other one is the fact that a closure of that size, with our enhanced traffic control requirements, we're talking about barricades completely blocking streets with hard closures, would effectively block in a large segment of the neighborhood from getting in and out and making ingress and egress difficult for them, and confusing. We could implement some soft closure points, which is our way of basically saying we staff the intersection with police officers to allow traffic in and out. Can be a little difficult, though, for folks to know where to go when an event is moving, because what's closed now is going to be open a little bit later, and so trying to communicate that to people in a way that makes sense, it can be difficult at times. So what we always strive to do is try and find an equitable balance. We don't want to have a disproportionate impact to the neighborhoods, but we want to recognize the need of the applicant to have the event in a manner that they like as well. And so, with setting out additional traffic control is another concern, because our staff is the one that is actually doing this. From a risk management standpoint, we feel that that's the most appropriate way to do that. They have the training to do it, they know how to set it up correctly. So a larger footprint, if you will, results in more work for them, and it results in a longer time period for the street to be closed, because it takes them longer to get around and set up and tear down. And so, we factored a lot of these considerations in, the direction of the council, the increased traffic control requirements, and then the impacts to the transportation network and the surrounding neighborhood, in deciding to make a different recommendation. So that's a little bit of background there. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that aspect, if you have any.
Before we actually get into questions or other comments, I would like to submit the green sheet, the contents of the green sheet, which are basically reflecting the mayor's comments and thoughts on the issue, some of the actions that he's taken, himself personally. The following is submitted on the mayor's behalf. After speaking with several members of the Turlock Pentecost Association, and also with downtown businesses that could potentially be impacted by downtown street closures, it's my feeling that we should allow the traditional parade route to continue down Main Street for the following reasons. Sunday mornings have minimal impact on downtown businesses. Sunday mornings should be encouraged as good alternatives to other days of the week, due to this minimal impact to businesses. Roughly thirty East Main merchants were contacted by Mrs. Candace Consolvis on my behalf, and they were largely supportive of this event because of the minimal impact on a Sunday morning. They also emphasized their encouragement of annual cultural events downtown, when they are on an appropriate date and at an appropriate time. A Sunday morning option was even offered as an option to the recent Assyrian New Year Parade. Even though merchants were informally contacted last evening, our two-week notification to impacted businesses should still be followed. While this would require a special council meeting on or around June eighth, I am prepared to call for this special meeting to allow for the June eleventh parade date. We have made exceptions in the past for several parades that have a longstanding tradition of being held in Turlock, specifically the annual Fourth of July Parade, Turlock High School Homecoming Parade, and the Christmas Parade. The annual Pentecost Parade should be added to this list of exceptions due to its nearly two-decade tradition. Overall, I appreciate our staff's efforts to be objective and to continue with a transparent and consistent process for street closures on parades. I also feel that we need to- I also feel that we need to make every effort not to hinder traditional annual events like this one. We should be prepared to outline any additional costs to the Pentecost Association that would be incurred due to the Main Street inclusion in their route. Again, I want to thank staff for their hard work on this issue, but I urge the council to honor the original request from the Turlock Pentecost Association to hold the parade on the traditional route that goes down Main Street on Sunday, June 11th. Mayor Gary Soyseth. Council comments before we open it up to the public here.
Councilmember DeHart, if I can make a few more notes. The public hearing for this event, or the public notification for tonight's hearing was made. There was an oversight in that notification and the date of the event was inadvertently left off of it. Tonight's hearing date was included. The other event details were included. Whatever route does be determined tonight, or if it is tabled for further discussion, a flyer will be sent out to those affected by the event stating the date because that was inadvertently left off. There is also a second alternative route before you. We have, since the submission of this item, we have had some feedback from community members as well as Pentecost Association members. And as you just heard from the mayor, we did have some additional information regarding that. And I do believe there are some association members here to answer any questions if you have any. I would also be happy to answer those questions.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Questions from council?
So what we have up on the screen, is this the traditional route?
This is the compromised route, I would say.
And, okay, and so what the mayor is requesting is?
Is this route that's now up on the screen. Everything's kind of shifted. I'm not sure why, I'm sorry about that. But it would be essentially the same route, just traveling Center Street a little bit further and turning on to Main. So the black line is the route to the church. The red line is their returning route to the Pentecost Hall.
Okay. Just as a note, moving forward, if we can include, I like that it's, you know, we have this map and then you have the route overlayed on there. That would be helpful to include it in the items as we go forward when you provide the staff report.
Absolutely, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Asker.
Just a quick comment. I tend to agree with the mayor on, I know we're trying to revamp the system, but we have certain events that have been going on for many, many years. And I think as long as we can get them approved or in accord with the business, downtown business people, I see no problem with this.
Okay, I'll hold my comments for the moment. Public comment? Anybody have any, yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone, mayor and representatives. Appreciate your time in helping us out with this matter. We are a little bit older than two decades. As a matter of fact, we're celebrating 105 years this year, to which of each of those years, we've traveled the specific route that's here on the, on the, on the map now. We do appreciate your time. We do realize that you need to be consistent and fair with everybody. However, we're trying to do that as well. We are a religious-based Portuguese organization here, as I said, celebrating 105 years. We do lots of different things that we feel to be good things for the community. We do raise funds, of course, which we put back into the community in forms of high school scholarships. We do help out individuals who are ill or unable to, you know, carry out their day-to-day acts. Also, we also take children shopping during Christmas time. We contribute, we have a large crab chipino feed. I'm sure many of you have probably attended. We do, we have also contributed a portion of our ticket sales, which we sell upwards of 2,000-plus tickets every year towards cancer research. So we do a lot of different things. Also, we make donations to other charitable organizations in the community. And with that, we appreciate your consideration to adopting, well, to continuing the route that we've always had as we, you know, we ask for our support in the community. And they're used to having the same, the route every year. And we, you know, we appreciate their support. There's a lot of other cities who have the same organizations who come and march in our parades from throughout the entire state. So we appreciate your time in the matter.
Thank you very much for your comment. Might there be others? I'll bring it back to council. Final consideration, comments, questions?
We certainly don't want to be the council that stops 105-year traditions. So I would gladly move to the first resolution. I'm not sure which resolution we need to, we need to use. Do them individually, but with the, with the proposal that's on the screen right now.
Mayor and council, thank you so much. With the evolving situation in regard to this closure request, where you find yourself tonight is essentially the item that has been agendized does not reference the preferred route. And so given that particular factor, we will have to bring this item before you at a special meeting, if you so choose to do so, for consideration. Along with that, as Amber mentioned, we would have to re-initiate the notification process because as you can tell from the screen, there will be additional property owner addresses that will need to be notified of this closure. And so there's a little bit of housekeeping that needs to be done. But again, if council chooses to do that, I just wanted to let you know there really isn't an action for you. If that's the direction you want to go in, it really has to come back before you for consideration.
So the mechanism whereby we do that is what, attorney? Do we table this? Do we vote it down? What?
So I think the discussion has been to continue this item to a special meeting that will be called on June 8th, if that is the desire of the council and if the council wants to set that date now. Otherwise, we would take no action tonight. Another alternative is take no action tonight, but go ahead and re-notice that special meeting once we confirm everybody's available to attend that special meeting. So you can do it to a date certain, tonight, today? Or, like I said, we could take that action after the meeting to notice it.
Again, I appreciate everything you guys are trying to accomplish. However, June the 8th will not allow us a feasible amount of time to re-coordinate what we have as our celebration actually starts on June the 6th, which is Tuesday. I'm just being, like, these things.
Our challenge that we currently have, council, is the notification requirement. As the mayor referenced in his email, we are still subject to that. Given the change in the route, I mean, unless council wanted to shorten that timeframe and, I mean, I'm open for direction on this. We typically try to do a two-week notice prior to the public hearing in order to make sure that there's ample notice to get the information to the property owners.
Yes, hello?
Is there a reason? Go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Came in. I just see that it's a two-week process, it's June 8th. But I think that the Turlock Pentecost Association should listen to the council. We've all expressed a lot of support for this. So unless there's a lot of outpouring objection of businesses, over 30 have been contacted and they don't have severe protection, we, it's most likely going to, but we still need to spend credibility by proxy and adhere to two weeks, which will be June 8th. And I'm prepared to call it for 5:00 PM on May.
I apologize, I didn't really catch up a lot. General, city manager, did you hear anything?
I think, I think he more or less, he said unless there's objection, which there hasn't been any objection from the businesses that he'd be prepared to.
Okay, and I guess what I'm asking now is in response to the question. That doesn't give you time. No, I'm not quite sure where we are on that.
Is that what you guys mean?
As far as the original routing, what does that do to you?
We would like to stick with our original 105-year-old parade route.
Right.
And if I did understand him correctly just now, that they have, you know, with 30 businesses being reached out to and unless there is an abundance of outreach against our parade route, then we could anticipate.
Okay, attorney, what, where are we at? Do we need to amend anything? Do we need to, what do we need to do with what's before us?
You can continue it to the June 8th meeting.
Because we're considering the notification that's already taken place as having been sufficient.
The notification that has taken place does not include the total parade route for the historic route, if, for lack of a better word. Although it is identified as an alternative in your staff report, I do not believe the notification was sent out, which is why the mayor said to continue to follow that process.
To clarify, councillor, the route, the alternative route that's in the staff report is actually the canal route that staff recommended. So the historic route was not noticed or included.
At all, okay. So that has no notification at all.
So the appropriate course of action at this point is to continue to June 8th. And everybody has sufficient time at this point to prepare and, I'm just assuming this to be correct. Please indicate, yes, no?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Okay, yes, please.
With the date being left out, was that, that was our doing?
That's correct. There was an omission that was not caught before it was mailed out.
So that, so that notice was invalid regardless, right? Whoever was notified is going to have to be re-notified?
We, we did not consider it to be invalid because it had the correct event reference. It had all of the closure information and it had tonight's meeting. We did receive phone calls from people who received that asking for the date of the event. And so, I mean, while there was a key piece of information left out, we did feel like it meant the obligation for the public hearing.
So attorney, if I can do this, I'd like to entertain a motion that we continue this particular item to a June 8th date, during which time between now and then, we catch up on whatever notification we need to make so that this becomes a done deal on behalf of our Portuguese, Pentecost Portuguese Association. I'll entertain that motion.
Yeah, a question. So we have to have a 10-day or two-week notice?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Calendar.
Okay, so that would be the 8th. So the 5th would be out of, 5th is 13 days. So would the 5th be possible or is that not? For the special meeting, instead of the 8th, can we do it on the 5th?
I haven't, I, I would assume that'd be up to the mayor if he...
And I think that we can, at this particular point in time, as we've backed ourselves into this particular issue, I believe that we can do pretty much what needs to be done to ensure that we have accommodated proper notification, but yet facilitate the event. Correct me if I'm wrong, attorney, am I doing something illegal?
I would never let you do something.
Okay, good. This is a good thing. So I will still entertain the motion that we continue this item to a June 8th special meeting of this council. We've got, okay, a motion by Councilmember Asker, seconded by the mayor. Do we need a readback on that? Do we know what to read back? Okay.
Continuing this item to a special meeting on June 8th, 2017, for further discussion on the proposed route options. Councilmember Asker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Thank you very much, council. I think that the desired result will be forthcoming and we can allow tradition to continue very worthwhile to our community and certainly to the association. So thank you very much for speaking on behalf, I appreciate that.
And I heard the mayor say that the meeting would be at 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM? So does that, that needs to be included then? Do we need to revisit to include that time?
I think I did that, didn't I?
Like I said, I didn't say, he did.
I think if you just affirm by voice vote that that's, it's included at the 5:00, for the council meeting to be at 5:00 PM.
All those in favor of having a 5:00 PM meeting on the 8th of July, signify by saying aye. Like I said, June. Aye, mayor? Okay, we've got five ayes, it passes. We affirm that. So, item B continued. Item C, surprise, then you have to move.
Thank you for having me to speak on behalf of this item.
And of course, this is a request to determine the closure for the 2017 Stanislaus County Fair, hosted by Stanislaus County Fair, and it's exempt from the provisions of California Environmental Quality Act, and to approve a special event permit application for the 2017 Stanislaus County Fair, hosted by Stanislaus County Fair, authorizing the associated closure for pedestrian safety from Friday, July 14th, 2017 at 12:00 noon, through Monday, July 24th, 2017 at 12:00 AM, and authorize the city manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions on the street closure.
Thank you for having me to speak on this item.
Welcome back.
On March 15th, 2017, the Parks, Recreation and Public Facilities Department received a special event application for the Stanislaus County Fair to host the 2017 Stanislaus County Fair. Included in this application was a street closure request in connection with the event being held within the fairgrounds. The proposed street closure has been requested for North Soderquist Road between Fullkirth Road and West Canal Drive from Friday, July 14th at 12:00 PM through Monday, July 24th at 12:00 AM. The applicant has requested the closure for, of the specified street section for event purposes and pedestrian safety. All proper public notification of this hearing has been completed. The special event committee has reviewed this application and supports the closure of this street section for the event, which is intended to be positive in nature and will not significantly affect the traffic flow within the area. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very well, council, questions, comments? None at this point, public? Any ideas, questions, comments of concern? Okay, then I'll bring it back to council for consideration.
Move to advance.
Move to advance, by Councilmember Asker. Did I hear a second from the mayor? Seconded by mayor, seconded by Mayor Soyseth. Clerk, could you please read, we'll treat the first resolution separately from the second. Would you please read that resolution?
Determining the closure of North Soderquist Road between Fullkirth Road and West Canal Drive for the 2017 Stanislaus County Fair, hosted by the Stanislaus County Fair, is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, in accordance with Section 15304, Minor Alterations to Land of the SEQA Guidelines.
That is correct. Please read the, take the role.
Councilmember Asker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Approving a special event permit application for the 2017 Stanislaus County Fair, hosted by the Stanislaus County Fair, authorizing the associated closure of North Soderquist Road between Fullkirth Road and West Canal Drive for pedestrian safety from Friday, July 14th, 2017, at 12:00 PM through Monday, July 24th, 2017, at 12:00 AM, and authorizing the city manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions on the street closure.
That is correct. Please take... Please take, uh, note of the votes.
Councilmember Escaer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And that resolution passes as well. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it. Before us, Item D. Uh, this item as well, uh, has been green-sheeted and those are available. Uh, and it reads to, uh, request to award bid and approve an agreement and amend the two thousand seventeen-eighteen municipal budget for city project number twelve dash zero, uh, six-zero-C, Turlock Regional Transit Center Phase Two. Director Pitcock?
Thanks, sir. The item before you is the award of bid and approval of an agreement, uh, in amount of five million, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars with D.D. construction of, of Woodbridge, California, two construction drawings. On November fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, the city council approved advertisement of the project and authorized construction bids. Shortly following approval, uh, the progress in the process, progress, the progress for the project stalled during the National Environmental Policy Act Review, which is called NEPA. It's a federal review, uh, and the FTA was, uh, reviewing as an FDA, is the Federal Transit Administration. More than a year after the city's initial, uh, application, NEPA's clearance was finally given. The Phase Two project includes a single-story, six thousand ninety-two-square-foot building consistent of office space for the city's contracted, contracted, uh, transit operator, public lobby space, as well as a two thousand one hundred and ninety-three-square-feet cold shelf for future development. No, no formal plans have been made for the cold shelf space, though potential options identified by staff are office space for City of Turlock Transit employees, a conference room, possibly a private rented, privately rented or rentals, and also the Altamont Commuter Express office space. Also included in the bids are three shade structures totaling seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet. The solar panels are to be installed on the center section of this shade structure to provide the majority of the power for the center. Also included in this project is, um, a parking lot. The parking lot includes electric vehicle charging for up to four vehicles. It also has, uh, what do they call it? Um, excuse me. LED lighting. I'm sorry about that. Uh, they, in two thousand thirteen, the Altamont Commuter Rail, uh, ACE, launched an effort to extend service to the valley. ACE's near-term expansion includes Turlock as a future stop. The seventy-seven spaces are identified to serve that as well as the local county commuter bus that serves the Bart Station. Landscaping will be consistent with the new state model, uh, water-efficient landscape ordinance as well as the efficient LED lighting. On March thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, five bids were received ranging from five-point-two million to six-point-one million. D.D. construction of Woodbridge was the lowest responsible bidder with that five million, one hundred and ninety thousand bid. The project estimate is, uh, estimated is twenty percent higher than what was estimated by the architect and staff. Staff reviewed the bids and compared the projects with the City of Tracy and the City of Antica and feel that while this is significantly higher than estimated, that it does fall within the going rate for this time, or this type of construction. Also, the one-year delay for the NEPA clearance also put us in a little bit less advantageous, uh, bid climate. Funding for the project will come from, uh, federal Section fifty-three oh-seven monies, federal Section fifty-three thirty-nine monies, state Proposition One-B funds, and local transportation funds. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the construction and funding of this project.
Questions from Council? We've got multiple. Councilmember Esca.
Just, uh, I was just looking at the size. We have six thousand ninety-two square feet and there's a twenty-one hundred and ninety-three square foot cold shelves that's for a future expansion, right? Is, is that going to be sufficient? I mean, or are we gonna have to expand again later?
No, that should be sufficient. Uh, this was, uh, one of the activities that the architect did was do a formal master plan. It also included if the ACE rail or some sort of commuter rail served out to us, that we would also include in future, uh, future development, is some sort of a skywalk over Golden State Boulevard to serve the rail stop and the rail, uh, platform.
Councilmember Jacob?
Assuming we move forward with this tonight, when can we expect the project to be completed?
About one year? Yeah. It's a one-year construction period, so by the time we execute agreements, uh, we're looking at probably, uh, August before we start breaking ground and a year after that.
Okay. Additional questions? Did I hear rustling on the phones? Perhaps? I did hear rustling on the phones.
Very good.
Comments from, uh, the public here? Input? Okay, we'll bring it back to Council. I'd just like to ask one question, Mr. Pitcock. In your experience, uh, and I guess it's because of the size of a, of a, uh, dollar value of a project, it's kind of been my concern over the course of several years now that, that quote-unquote lowest responsive, lowest responsible bidder seems to prevail. What has been your experience with respect to other municipalities, uh, in terms of knowing about it? I know you haven't been there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, other municipalities having a review committee, uh, housed or ensconced in that committee a member of council so that there was an oversight effort made to look at a, a bid that's this size and, uh, to ensure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, at least from a more objective pers, uh, perspective than perhaps staff could provide.
I haven't heard, personally, I have not, uh, met with nor heard of such committee with another agency. Uh, we could definitely, uh, look into that as far as the future, you know, if we wanted to go that direction in the future.
If we didn't do that, how about having a more formal process for bid presentation? Where the council might have input, uh, or opportunity to ask question of prospective bidders?
There can be a process by which you prequalify bidders that we possibly, we could do, um, some sort of, uh, adjustment to how we bid out projects and make that part of the, make some sort of a presentation. But again, when you use the public contract code, lowest responsible bidder is still gonna be the one that prevails, but you can go through a prequalification process and prequalify contractors.
Oh, I certainly understand that. I've been living with the results of that for multiple years now, but I think what I'm actually trying to get to the bottom of, if I don't particularly like the design because I don't think it really meets, uh, what we're looking for, uh, even if it's the lowest bidder, but I don't like the design, do I not have the latitude and the flexibility to say we need to take the next higher bidder? And can there not be a process that says, uh, because it's our formal process in the City of Turlock or anywhere else, uh, we have the latitude to do that?
I, there is a process by which you have to formally say the bid does not meet muster. It's no longer a responsive bid. You have to go through that process before you can then elevate to the next bidder. I don't believe you can arbitrarily do that.
Okay, and I really didn't want to, I didn't want to inject an arbitrary nature to it. I think it's very intentional on my part. It's not arbitrary whatsoever. I think that the reality is, is that when we have, uh, companies that routinely or habitually uh, come up with additional charges that we have to then, uh, speak to here at this dais or in closed session because it results in something else weird, uh, prudence would dictate that we have the latitude and the opportunity to ask appropriate questions. I'm just trying to figure out whether or not there is that opportunity.
Again, the only realm that I can think of that we could do is in some sort of a, if it gets to a certain size project, that we have some sort of a prequalification process. We can definitely look into that as far as an, an option and bring that back to Council.
And I, and I think you'll appreciate my math, uh, which I've done in my head. Uh, five percent of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project is significantly less than five percent of a six million dollar project.
Absolutely.
And so, uh, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, at what point can we be responsive to our public as staff and electeds?
Let, let me go back and let me look through the language of the state law and see what we can and cannot do and bring that back to you.
I'd really appreciate a, a fairly detailed report on that.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, um, did we do public comment yet? I forget. You guys get a chance to talk. I did that. So I brought it back. I've asked, okay, yeah, and I'm, I'm back with us. What's the wishes, uh, desire of the Council?
I have to start the motion. Last motion.
Okay, we can, uh, manage both together. Councilmember Jacob has moved second.
No, second.
And a second by Councilmember Esca. Uh, Clerk, could you please read?
Awarding bid and approving an agreement in the amount of five million, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, Fund four-two-six, with D.D. Construction, Inc. of Woodbridge, California, for city project number twelve sixty-C, Turlock Regional Transit Center Phase Two, amending the two thousand seventeen-eighteen municipal budget for city project number twelve dash sixty-C, Turlock Regional Transit Center Phase Two, as outlined in the resolution. Councilmember Escaer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And that was a yes?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion and resolution both pass. Thank you very much, Council. And you're up here still. Welcome.
I am.
It's good to see you again. Request to approve amendment number one to an agreement for engineering services during construction of city project number one-five dash three-nine Bravo, Regional Water Quality Control Facility Denitrification Project. Mr. Pitcock?
Thank you. Uh, this is amendment number one to Corolo Engineers' contract. Uh, would be bringing their contract total to one million, three hundred and two thousand and six hundred and one dollars. As you know, the city owns a, and operates a twenty-million-gallon-per-day regional water quality control facility located at seven oh one South Walnut Road. Corolo Engineers providing, uh, provided the design services for the denitrification facilities and the secondary clarifier number five facility, both of which are construct, will be constructed as one project, uh, with this, uh, and it's currently out the bid. The, the bids will be, uh, brought back to the Council July eleventh, two thousand seventeen council meeting for your approval. Now that the project is nearing construction, it is necessary to obtain specialized engineering services. Uh, these services include providing printed bid documents and recorded drawings, updating the bid documents as modified by project addenda, participation at construction progress meetings, site visits by technical staff. This is your structural electrical instrumentation, uh, contractors, responding to contractors' requests for information, review shop drawings, middles and change orders, startup and training of new equipment, and updating the existing operation and maintenance manuals for the Turlock Regional Quality Facility. Costs for these, uh, services are eight thousand one hundred and fourteen, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars, bringing the total contract cost to one million, three hundred and two thousand, six hundred and one dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if you have some technical nature, Director Cook's here as well to answer those as well.
And please forgive me, this item has also been green-sheeted and that is as well available. Questions? Comments? From the public, any comments, questions? Okay, I'll bring it back to Council. What is the will of the Council?
I have to start the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Jacob, for advancing the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Soyseth. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, could you please read back the...
Approving Amendment Number One to an agreement with Corolo Engineers of Walnut Creek, California, for engineering services during construction, construction of city project number fifteen thirty-nine B, R.W.Q.C.F. Denitrification, bringing the contract total to one million, three hundred and two thousand dollars and six hundred and one.
That is correct. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Escaer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries as well, Council. Item number F, request to approve the purchase and delivery of two thirty-five-foot-long compressed natural gas CNG-powered low-floor transit buses.
Good evening again, Mayor, Members of Council. Uh, before you tonight is consideration for the purchase of these two buses from Gillick. As you may recall, earlier this year in January, the city entered into an agreement with Gillick for the purchase of no less than four and no more than ten Gillick buses over a five-year time period. At that time, we did not seek approval of an actual purchase. It was just the parent agreement for a future purchase, and we mentioned we'd be coming back, and, uh, here we are. So this is for two buses, um, that are gonna be, are thirty-five foot, so similar to the long buses that you see driving around town. This, these are gonna be the same size. It's gonna help us out greatly in, uh, being able to carry more passengers around, particularly for our peak periods, uh, around schools and then as well as special events, uh, when people really wanna pack on and we wanna be able to get them where they need to go. This is gonna be very helpful in that regard. Uh, as federal funding becomes available in subsequent years, we're gonna continue to leverage a lot of our federal funds to the purchase of additional buses, uh, to replace our aging fleet, to get to a point where we have a very secure and reliable fleet, uh, and, uh, what that does is it opens up opportunities for staff and for Council to make operational decisions that are not hampered by the fleet. And that's, that's where we are now. We're challenged with some fleet restrictions right now, and so we wanna get beyond that. Uh, these buses are fully federally funded. Uh, that is the, the source of the funds. They use CNG, which is part of our fuel path for transit, and so, um, as you know, back in, uh, February, we had a bus fire that further limited our fleet availability and provided some operational challenges. We've been actively working through that. Um, I have to commend our fleet maintenance staff as well as our contractor, uh, First Transit, for everything that they've done to help keep buses on the road and keep providing service to people, uh, many of whom are transit-dependent and they rely on this to, to get to where they need to go. So the, uh, the detailed specs are attached here, um, just as a, sort of a point of context. The city staff, city transit staff, city fleet staff, the Gillick manufacturer representative as well as First Transit all met together and went through every spec line by line, identifying what is necessary, what is prudent to be included on these buses. Any of the items on there are not what I would consider to be luxury items. They're strictly what are they, what is the standard that fleet requires for maintenance purposes and what is, uh, in meeting with the, uh, service requirements and standards as set forth in the short-range transit plan. So it is sort of your standard-level, uh, options in all those cases, and certainly any safety items, uh, we included those as well. Uh, any additional lighting, uh, any, any elements that would help improve safety for the driver and improve visibility, uh, those sorts of things are included as well. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Councilmember Jacob?
Have, have we looked into electric options that don't require anything else?
We're continuing, we're, we're looking into electric vehicles right now as an option. Um, one of the concerns is that it's still a fairly new technology. I know some of the big operators have, have moved towards that and have dozens of electric vehicles in their fleet. But because it's still relatively new, our concern was that not to move to it too quickly and, uh, when our fleet is not yet stabilized, is trying to stabilize the fleet more and then move towards, uh, an expansion into electric so that we can comfortably do that and if there's hiccups along the way, we're not jeopardizing service to the community. Um, but we are exploring federal grants. There's a low-no program through FTA, uh, for low emissions or no emission vehicles. Uh, it's a competitive grant funding source, and we're, we're looking into applying for that to, which again, those funds would be available several years down the road if we rewarded them, uh, but we are exploring that path right now. Modesto and some of the surrounding transit agencies have participated in a separate, uh, competitive grant process, and they are getting Proterra electric buses. And so it's, it's something coming to our region, and we wanna participate in that. And to the extent that we can have electric vehicle charging infrastructure at our transit center at some point in the future and help support regional transit services, so when Start comes into town, when Merced comes into town, they can charge up and allows them to get back, um, that's being a good regional partner, too. So that's the other reason why we're exploring that.
And do you know the cost difference? Are they generally more or less expensive than what we're considering?
The very general research I've done into the Proterra buses specifically, which they're not the only one, but they're one of the main ones out there, the pricing is about the same, about five hundred and fifty thousand. These are a little bit more. Depends on the specifications you add on there. I will point out that this item before you tonight is part of our long-term bus, uh, or fleet stabilization strategy. The lead time on this bus, the production lead time is twenty months. So realistically, it's probably gonna be closer to two years by the time this bus arrives on-site. So as such, it's our long-term strategy. What you'll see in the next month or month and a half, we'll be bringing another council item before you for an intermediate, uh, fleet management strategy, which is the purchase of smaller buses that are already available, they're produced, they're sitting on a lot, and that will be up for your consideration as well to meet a shorter, the turnaround time on that is about 45 days. So, just to provide some context and clarity on that.
Okay. Just no questions, comments? Comments from the public? Any concerns or questions? Okay, seeing none, bringing it back for consideration. Councilmember Asker moves to advance. And Vice Mayor will second the motion. So, it's been moved and seconded, Councilmember Asker, I've seconded it, to pass the motion. So, clerk, could you read it back for us, please?
Approving the purchase and delivery of two 35-foot-long compressed natural gas CNG-powered low-floor transit buses from Gilig LLC of Hayward, California, in an amount not to exceed $1,187,996, Fund 426, as authorized under City Contract Number 16177, for City Project Number 1726, purchase of Gilig Buses 2017.
That is correct. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Asker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Motion passes. That's great. Okay, item G, a request to authorize issuance of a request for proposal, RFP, for a transit operations contractor, once again, Mr. York, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. So, the item before you tonight is to authorize an RFP for transit operations services. The city, like many of our regional counterparts, contracts out transit services to professional transit contractors. And so, the contract that we currently have is with First Transit that started about five and a half years ago, December 1, 2011. And so, it's time to go out and seek bids again. I wanted to provide a little bit of a, some context for some, or highlight the changes really that are going to be made in this solicitation process as opposed to those in the past. The first is, the term is going to be 43 months. What that does is, it seems kind of like an odd number, but what we're trying to do is get back on a standard fiscal year schedule. So, they are going to start services December 1, the day after the current contract ends, and then it will eventually end on June 30. And then, future extensions will then be based on the fiscal year. So, this gets us back on that schedule. Performance standards are, have been added. What we found over the duration of this current contract is that there hasn't been a lot of teeth, for lack of a better term, in terms of holding the contractor accountable for certain items and meeting the performance standards as set forth by the city. And so, some elements have been added to clearly identify performance standards in a variety of different areas, to make sure that that is clearly known. There's some liquidated damage provisions in there when the contractor does not adhere to that, to not meet the standards that are set forth by the city. So, that is different as opposed to the past contract. Compensation will continue to be based on a combination of a fixed monthly rate and then an hourly rate as well. So, as service changes, as we increase and decrease service, that hourly amount will be the same, but it will be calculated based on hours of service that month. The fixed monthly rate will remain consistent every month of the contract. One of the things that is different here, that again, from past contracts, is the stipulation of a minimum wage requirement for safety-sensitive functions, and that's a FTA term, basically refers to dispatchers and bus drivers. And what that says is, if you recall, a few years ago, we had some bus drivers that actually came to a council meeting and were concerned about their wages, which at the time, we had explained to them that the city doesn't establish the wages, it's the contractor that is establishing the wages. Nonetheless, they were concerned about that, and they expressed those feelings here. In recognition of the fact that we want to care for the bus drivers that live in this community and work in this community, whether it's for a contractor or for us, as well as the fact that we want to reduce turnover, which causes a significant operational problem for us when we're constantly having turnover, because not only does the contractor have to train up a new employee, but they have to get tested by DMV, and it's not uncommon for that testing wait period to be 60, 90 days or more. And so, that causes a challenge for us if there's a lot of turnover to neighboring services that pay more. So, in that regard, what we established was a $15 per hour rate as a minimum wage for anyone that is performing a safety-sensitive function. And in addition, it's tied to the state minimum wage, or actually the local minimum wage in effect in the city of Turlock, if we chose to adopt our own. And so, there will always be a buffer or separation between the local minimum wage and the minimum wage for the contractor of $2 an hour. So, that was put in there, too. The other thing is, by establishing this, it sets a clear expectation for the level of quality we want to get out of a contractor. Essentially have everybody competing with the same understanding. You don't have someone coming in, low bidding, and undercutting everybody else, and then we suffer service performance issues later on down the road. We clarified service change language in there. We want to avoid a situation where we propose a service change and the contractor pushes back saying that it's a significant change, therefore they want more money. So, we've clarified what constitutes a minor and a major change so that they understand that, that allows the city to retain flexibility in us providing the service that we want to our community. We also increased the minimum insurance requirements from, there's an error here, it says $1 million to $5 million, it's actually to $10 million now. Since the time this staff report was submitted, we sought advisory opinions from the RMA as well as our Witten Ireland Insurance Provider, and they both recommended the $10 million. So, that is actually going to be $10 million, which is actually consistent with Modesto's as well. There's a list of interested stakeholders that have already expressed interest, and they're listed there. Pending council's approval of this RFP, I will release that final RFP to include any changes that you may elect to include tonight, tomorrow. And that will start the clock ticking. Unlike a traditional RFP process, this is going to take a little bit longer, there's a more involved RFI meeting process. But again, the idea is that we would have the new contract with potentially a new contractor start December 1 of this year. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. York. I know that even our current contractor is aware that this RFP process was going to take place, so this has all been above the cloud, if you will, and very transparent operation. Thank you very much for that. Questions, comments, concerns?
And I would like to know, Kimberly Orozco, the general manager for First Transit, is here. If you had any questions for her, she's available, too.
Awesome. So, it didn't come as a surprise? Okay. Blessings, thanks. Any other public comment? Mr. Treewiler, I think you're going to come forward and stand at the microphone.
Vice Mayor, council, staff, I see this as a good thing, going in the right direction. $15 per hour, I'm still not sure about that figure. I was paying my employees $15 per hour 10 years ago. Of course, we were doing electronic work, sound systems, but it, I don't know if that's going to be a wage that's going to be that much of an incentive for them not to join Modesto Transit System, which pays, I think it's $18 or $19 per hour. And I don't know if they get any medical benefits, but we need to take care of our employees, just like we take care of our staff, employees, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treewiler.
I could speak to that a little bit. I had the ability to sit on the Modesto RFP scoring committee, so I was able to view the information that was submitted from all the proposers, look at the price ranges that were submitted, and the base range for many of the proposers was 13 and a half, 14, 14 and a half. So, 15 as a minimum puts us just above what would be the sort of current bid climate, if you will, for the minimum wage for the drivers. It establishes a solid floor, doesn't establish a ceiling, but establishes a floor. And so, we feel that it's reasonable in the sense that it's just above the minimums experienced everywhere else, but not arbitrarily set so high as to not be appropriate. As far as benefits, I can say that that wage or the proposal that is submitted by the contractor will include the cost of benefits for that employee, and as part of the proposal process, they outline what benefits they provide. And it's all evaluated and reviewed by the scoring committee.
What would a typical, if I could be so bold, what would a typical progression be for an employee like that?
Well, that's, it's really up to the contractor. It depends on the program they have in place and how they choose to...
Are we aware of what those programs might look like?
They typically don't share that with us, no. They share it in the proposal process, but they're free to make changes throughout, and it varies widely across contractors.
So, I'm trying to get some sort of, as you can understand, I'm trying to get some sort of understanding as to whether or not we need to be pushing for something different in our RFP, or if there's in fact something that, you know, prevailing wisdom says. And, I mean, $15 is not a career wage. It's a starting wage.
It's a starting wage, and the idea would be if it's the minimum, absolute minimum wage, that that would be your starting employee, and generally, a starting employee that is being trained out in the field performing that function would be the 15. They would generally then get some sort of raise when they're moved into regular status for people that could be on a packed bus involved in a collision. So, that, it's really more about that.
That's fair. Thank you. Other questions? I don't want to monopolize here. Councilmember Jacob?
Also, a comment to, I don't know if this helps you melt, but with the state enacted minimum wage going up to $15 by, I think, 2022 or something like that, that the $2 buffer would actually make ours 17.
Correct. And that was done intentionally. There's also an elevator in there for dispatchers, because what we find is sometimes it's difficult for, if the dispatchers are not paid more than the bus drivers, in some cases, they might even be paid a little bit less, it's difficult to encourage them to want to take that promotion. They're the seasoned people we want to have behind the dispatch desk, and so, what we have in there is requiring a dollar separation from drivers as well, so to encourage and facilitate that to occur as well.
Other questions, comments, public, ideas? Thanks for the comments. Bringing it back for consideration. What's the will of the council? Councilmember Jacob, advance.
Say.
Councilmember Asker, seconds the motion. Please read back, clerk.
Authorizing issuance of a request for proposal, RFP, for a transit operations contractor to provide fixed route and demand response transit services to Turlock Transit for City Project Number 1626, Transit Operations and Management Services. Councilmember Asker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Thank you very much, council. The measure passes. And, oh, by the way, we're going to take about a five-minute break here, we've got some restoration that needs to take place. Okay, stand-up time. Okay, if we could gather back together, we'll continue our meeting. We'll return the meeting to order, and pertaining to item, let's see, which one it is?
Eight H.
Item eight H. This is going to be pulled from the calendar this evening because it needs additional staff work and considerations, so that will be removed for the time being. Item H, and that is a request to accept the 2017 City of Turlock Sidewalk Repair Program update and appropriate $5,000 for the encroachment permit fee backfill program for sidewalk repairs, increasing the annual program total to $20,000 beginning fiscal year 2017-18. Mr. Schultz.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to give you an update on the sidewalk repair. It's been a while since we've had this conversation at council. Going to start off with the important legal issues that we see. In 2002, the United States Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit ruled that the American with Disabilities Act applied to sidewalks. Because of that, in addition to the unnecessary injuries and medical costs, trip and fall injuries can result in litigation negatively impacting both property owners and the city's financial resources. The Streets and Highway Code declares property owners responsible to maintain their sidewalks adjacent to their property in safe condition. Along with that, we have our own municipal code, Section seven dash two dash six oh one, that requires all property owners to maintain their sidewalk adjacent to the property in a safe and, in a safe and undangerous condition. Along with that, in 2016, we updated that municipal code to include property sale and transfer, so now they have to notify prior to selling the property, which has been a big help as we go through the process, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as we move through the slideshow. The city's procedures for a repaired sidewalk. The city typically is notified about an repaired sidewalk in the following ways: trip and fall accident that gets reported to us, pedestrian observation, and then city staff conducting work while in an immediate area. Once notified, the city immediately goes out. We mark up the area, or we put a sign out in the area, and we contact the engineering department, who sends out an inspector, and they go through, and they'll mark the area. And part of those markings is for notification that there is, a trip has it there, but it also kind of lays out the scope of work for the property owner, so they know what they're looking at when they get there. Inspectors do a really good job where they'll paint orange paint, whether it's a grind, whether it's a total replace, mark each panel, kind of gives them an idea when they get a contractor as to what the scope of work is going to be when they do that. Once we get those marked up, we send out a first letter of notice to the property owner. That letter gives them ten days to respond back to us. The letter outlines our financial assistance program, asks the property owner to make contact with us during those ten days. At that point, extensions are given if they have a reasonable cause, which normally is. As we saw this last winter, we had a lot of rain days, a lot of wet ground, so we didn't see a whole lot of sidewalk work being done, so at this point, we have a huge backlog of people who are trying to find contractors to get that work done for us. The property owner obtains a permit due to the engineering department. The encroachment permit fees are backfilled up to $160.50. That's about $1,000 worth of work, and that is as the funds are available. It's not unlimited money, and that's why we're coming back in a, in a motion, I'm asking for an appropriation of an additional $5,000. And then, once it's signed off, staff remove the barricades, the sidewalk is considered repaired. That's in a perfect world. And if that perfect world does not happen, we move on to our second step, which is a second notification. This notification goes out, lets the property owner know that they have fourteen days to repair their sidewalk or contact us. They also get an administrative citation warning. The second posting is mailed to them, but it's also posted to the residents, so they can see that along with the administrative citation. This is where we find a lot of our residents fall into this category. They don't respond to the first notice, but by the time they get the second notice, once we post out on the door, generally, within one or two days, we get a, a good percentage of people calling, wanting to start mitigating what the issue was. So it's been a really useful thing for us, and it also initiates the lien process if they fail to continue to reach out to us. And something we don't do a whole lot, but we do have it, it's our third phase, and that's a third letter, it's sent certified, and it's also attached with an administrative citation where they're actually getting a fee charged to them for not responding to us. This gives the property owner fourteen more days to respond to us, so you can see it's a pretty long process before we move into a lien process. We don't receive any response. We come to council, ask for the lien process, and we will fix the sidewalk and charge them for that. That's happened two times since 2013. And as I say that, that's just to highlight the amount of work the staff does to make sure people get through this process. It's not an easy process for anybody. I've yet to have anybody call me saying they set aside a rainy day fund to fix a sidewalk. It just hasn't happened. And so, as we work with them, we, we go as far as if we don't hear from them after the second, before we send that third, we'll look through the utility management system, try to find a phone number that matches up with that property owner, just cold-call them, reach out to them to make sure that we're not missing something. So by the time we get to this third notice, we've done our due diligence, and we made every effort to make sure that we reach out to those property owners. The next slide, we kind of already went into the, the third notice. I'm sorry, I didn't flick that fast enough as I was going through that. Sidewalk repair permit process. As you look at this, we started backtracking this in 2013, 14. We were just under sixty, and as we moved forward to 2017, this was, this report was done in early April when we had these numbers, and we already maxed out at the ninety. And that ninety is an important number because that kind of coincides back with the amount of money that we have to backfill, that one sixty fifty. The year prior to, in 15, 16, it was early summer, or early spring, when we ran out of money, and we really saw a lot of the property owners had, had held off on the repairs until the first of the year, until that money was put back into the account. And then, because we've done so many sidewalks, this year, that money ran out in early April. And so, although we do have all these backlogs, we're, we're working with the people to get them done as soon as possible, that is a huge, huge tool in our tool belt as we reach out to the community, try to help them get these sidewalks repaired. Makes a big difference to them when they go through the process to not have to pay for that permit for the first thousand dollars worth of work. And then, as we move on to the next slide, this, this kind of highlights some of the repairs that we've done over the years, starting in 2012. And when we see the saw cutting, that goes back to our contract with precision concrete. They do the saw cutting for us. So from 2012 to 2017, you can see that we've gone from 509, 708, 547, 44, or 442, 237, total of 2,443 sidewalk raises that they've mitigated. And when we talk about that, what they do is they do a saw cut. It's not a remove and replace, and so when we look at the average on that, it's about eighty-seven percent less expensive for the saw cut than it would be if we had to remove and replace that. Just an estimate over that time period. It saved about $900,000 doing the saw cut instead of doing the remove and replace, so it's a contract that's well worth it. They do quick, clean work. They're able to grind anything from a quarter of an inch to two inches, depending on the condition of the sidewalk, so it falls into quite, quite a few different things. We have an annual contract with them for about $45,000. And then, you can see what we've done as a city when we have other facilities that we have to work on, and oddly enough, the numbers go from eleven to seventeen throughout the whole report, but it really has lowered the amount of sidewalk work that we're doing as staff and putting more back onto the, the precision contract. Along with that, as we look at the important things in our tool belt and we're working through this process, the backfill is really an important part for the community to have access to that. Our financial aid program that we offer really helps people to mitigate through the thing, and I understand that we're currently have some issues with our community development, whether we're going to have that or not, and so staff are currently working on an alternative, because I don't think we can continue to run this program without some kind of financial assistance for people who are needed at. Our municipal codes are there to help support it, and it's really helped us move through the process, and we've grown by tons over the last four or five years in the sidewalk program, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Let's have a quick question, Eric. On, when we contact the home, do we contact the homeowner or whoever's living in the house?
The letter goes to the property owner. The, the only time they get notification is if the second notification goes to the property owner, and then the resident would also get something posted. So a lot of times when there, there's rentals, the renters will definitely help us get in contact with the owners when they get that posted on the door, and they'll follow up to make contact.
And could you review the third step? Is that sent certified, or how did we do that?
That's sent certified, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Questions from the public? Hearing none. Comments? None. Bringing it back to council, what is the will of the council? Councilmember Jacob advance.
Second.
Mayor Soyseth, second. Clerk, could you read back the?
Accepting, accepting the 2017 City of Turlock Sidewalk Repair Program update outlining efforts to maintain the safety and accessibility of the public sidewalk system, appropriating $5,000 to account number 217-50510-47320001, repair program sidewalk from Fund 217, gas tax, unallocated reserves for the encroachment permit fee backfill program for sidewalk repairs, increasing the annual program total to $20,000 beginning in fiscal year 2017-18.
That is correct. Please take a vote on both resolutions, please.
Councilmember Asker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Bublack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Thank you very much, council. The measures do pass. Both resolutions come now. Eight. Mayor Council. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. I appreciate it. Eight J, request to accept Phase One and Phase Two of the environmental site assessment of the Turlock Armory property located at Flower Street, and accept the California Military Department's request to terminate the existing 99-year ground lease with the City of Turlock. Ms. Van Kilder.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. The item before you is the result of the action that you took back on August 30th of 2016, where council appropriated funds to conduct a Phase One evaluation of the 1040 Flower site, which the armory currently resides. At that time, we knew that there was a possibility that we would have to conduct a Phase Two evaluation, depending on what the results were of the Phase One. In fact, that was a requirement based on materials that were found at the location. Through those analyses, we found that there were two primary items of concern that needed to be evaluated, one of them being lead dust that was residual from the indoor shooting range that's at the facility, which we knew about that going into the evaluation. And then, the second item that was brought to our attention was the residual of some chloridane, which is a commonly used agricultural pesticide. Once we received that information through the Phase Two evaluation, we did some consulting with the, with both staff and the engineering team, as well as our environmental consultants to try and understand more about the chloridane. We believe that that is residual of activities that happened prior to the occupation of the armory by the military department, and therefore not associated with the activities that occurred as a result of the armory's existence. We've been in communication with our partners at the California Military Department. They acknowledge their responsibility to mitigate the lead dust residual that is a result of the indoor shooting range, and they intend to take steps to mitigate that once their employees are removed from the site. They did, however, question whether or not the responsibility lies with them in regard to the chloridane, and also acknowledged that they believe that that was at the site prior to their occupation. So tonight, you have two actions before you. The first is the motion to accept the results of the Phase One and Phase Two of the environmental site assessment for the armory property. And then, the resolution before you is determining whether or not to accept the California Military Department's request to end the 99-year lease, leaving all of the improvements for the City of Turlock. And as referenced in the staff report, your, the existing agreement actually gives the option for the city to require that all of those improvements are essentially removed. As the California Military Department has reviewed the site, they would prefer to leave the improvements intact rather than incur the cost of the demolition. As you know, the city did do some early evaluation of the property in itself, and there were no significant challenges identified. Now, with the environmental assessment completed, we know that there are a couple of items that need to be mitigated. These are the two actions before you tonight. Depending on what council decides to do here, there could be further discussions about future uses at the site, however, that is not on the agenda for tonight, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And what are those questions or comments? Any? Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. I'd still like to hear from you at the podium and the microphone. That way, I can hear you.
What, what, what have you determined about this chloridane contamination? I mean, is that in the soil? Is that in, and have you heard anything about what the cost to remove it's going to be?
So the chloridane residual was found in the soil sample. In discussing with, with staff and in, in. In discussing with staff and in conjunction with the environmental specialists, we're estimating the cleanup to be in the ballpark of about $30,000. Clearly, that is something that we will have to, that could, that number could change depending on, you know, if the specimen site becomes larger. We don't have, we don't know that until you actually get in to do the remediation, but those are kind of, that's sort of the ballpark that we're referencing at this particular point, based on the experts.
Do we have any idea, Allison, who the tenant was prior to the military? So that we have some sort of idea of how that chlorine got there?
I don't know who the tenant, I don't know the person that owned the property, but we do know it was primarily used for agricultural purposes prior to that construction.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions, comments? Bringing it back for consideration. Okay, it's been moved to advance, second by the mayor.
With the City of Turlock, leaving the site improvements on the property located at 1040 Flower Street, pending the CMD's remediation of the identified lead dust, but not the removal of the chlordain impacted soil as it occurred prior to the CMD's development of the land, and authorizing the mayor or city manager to execute all documents associated with the lease termination.
That is correct on both counts. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Asker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Motion and resolution passes as read. And at this point, we're going to be, thank you very much, Allison, I appreciate that. We're going to open up the Public Financing Authority meeting. I call that meeting to order because item K of the regular agenda, and there is an item on this Public Financing Authority agenda that will coincide in presentation. However, any public participation on any item that does not have, or is, does not appear on the Public Financing Agency agenda? Public participation, seeing none. Any declaration of conflict of interest or disqualification on the part of the council? Mayor? Councilmember Booblaack?
No.
No? Still there, council? For Booblaack, I think so. Or did she say? I couldn't hear her.
I said, "No."
Thank you. Thank you very much. It didn't come through. Either that or my ear didn't receive it. We have an item on the consent calendar. What are, one item? What are, it's the acceptance of the minutes. What is the desire of the council? Excuse me. The agency. Advanced consent by Councilmember Jacob, seconded by Mayor Soyseth. Please read the motion.
Adopting the consent calendar. Agency member Asker?
Yes.
Agency member DeHart?
Yes.
Agency member Booblaack?
Yes.
Agency member Jacob?
Yes.
Chair Soyseth?
Yes.
And that motion carries as well. There are no public hearings within the agency this evening. Schedule matters, 6A, and I'd like to have Ms. Lorenzi deal with not only Measure A, or Measure A, hello. Item 6A here on the public financing, but simultaneously, item 8K on our regular council agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you. We'll get two done at once.
Yes.
Good evening. I'll keep this brief, based on the hour. I just wanted to bring both these resolutions before both the city council and the Public Financing Authority Board. There are resolutions that will allow us to move forward with the refunding of the 2008 water revenue bonds and issue 2017 refunding bonds. Each of the items has documents associated with it that are provided in the staff report that need to be approved via the resolutions, so that the refunding can move forward. In each of the staff reports, there's a general description of what the purpose of those documents are, so that that information is available. As noted previously, the current bonds that we're refunding have about 3.52%. These refunding bonds, because the 2008 have a 10-year call, they're not eligible to be retired until May of 2018, so the proceeds of this bond issuance would go into an escrow account and would be there to make debt service payments between now and May of 2018, and then entirely retire the bonds in May of 2018. The resolution before the Public Financing Authority sets a maximum par of 29 million if we do, if we have a debt service reserve, 27 million if there is no debt service reserve. And right now, staff is anticipating issuing these bonds without a debt service reserve. We did a presentation a week ago for Standard and Poor's, and we presented it without a debt service reserve to them and did not get any reaction, so at this point, we're assuming that they are going to be okay with that. We have asked Standard and Poor's to provide us their rating by May 26th, and to date, I have not received any questions. A lot of times, you get those questions a day or two before they're ready to issue their rating, so I'm anticipating tomorrow or Thursday. The resolution for the Public Financing Authority also sets a maximum true interest cost of 4%. The reason that the par and the interest rates are set higher than what we anticipate they'll be is if there's significant movement in the market, we put a ceiling on what we're willing to do at this point in time. If for some reason, the market would just get crazy and go above those ceilings, we would not issue the bonds. We'd come back both before the city and the Financing Authority to get further direction and provide information at that point in time. It's likely if the market moved that much, the refinancing may not make sense. So that's why we put maximums and come back to you if we need to. Our current timeline, as I mentioned to, we've asked Standard and Poor's for their rating by May 26th. When we did our presentation, they indicated that that was possible. Assuming that we get that rating, we plan to issue the preliminary official statement on May 31st, and then price in the first or second week of June, with a closing at the latter part of June. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions here from the council? I do have one question, Marie, if you'd be so kind. I'm a very strong believer and proponent of refunding for the obvious savings considerations. However, if we've had a meeting with Standard and Poor's, and we don't yet know whether or not they're going to issue based on, or provide a rating based upon what our desires are, are we acting prematurely at this point?
It normally takes a week to 10 days after you meet with them for them to give you a rating. They don't give it to you on the spot. Likely, actually, asking them by May 26th was actually pushing them a little bit. They usually like a little bit longer than that. The presentation we gave to them, and we summarized it, we told them that we believe that the financial condition and the management of the water fund supported double A rating, which is what we currently have. So far, I've had no questions and no pushback, so at this point, that's what we're anticipating, and we'll see what happens when they finally get out to us.
And if they came back with an A tomorrow, what would we do?
We would see what that does as far as impacting the interest rate, and whether it makes, or buying insurance makes sense. We just, we'd go back and see what that does to everything we've done, and see if refunding still makes sense, and see if we could refund within the parameters that we're asking the Financing Authority to approve tonight. If we're outside of that, of course, we'll come back. We won't move forward, and we'll come back.
So this is not a funding, this is just approval to fund should?
Right. The resolutions before the city and the Financing Authority tonight are to approve the documents that are listed in the resolution, as well as to set the cap on the par and set the cap on the interest rate.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Additional questions or comments? Okay, though the issue was handled simultaneously, 8K and 6A, we're going to treat the 8K first. Clerk, could you please read that resolution for us? Pardon me? Still can't hear you. Oh, yeah. Somebody want to move the resolution? I guess that's appropriate. Okay, Councilmember Jacob advances the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by a council member. I guess it's getting late, folks. Sorry about that, but we're having fun, right? Okay, good.
Authorizing the form of an authorizing, authorizing the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture, a master installment purchase agreement, a 2017 supplement thereto, a bond purchase agreement, a continuing disclosure agreement, and an official statement relating to an installment purchase, financing, and approving certain actions in connection therewith.
That is correct. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Asker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
The resolution passes now for item 6A. Please read back the recommended resolution. Oh, we still have to, yeah, we have to kind of move it, right? Okay, good.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Jacob, and I guess I'm progressively going down. Seconded by Councilmember Asker. Please read the recommended resolution.
Authorizing the issuance and sale of Turlock Public Financing Authority Water Revenue Bonds Series 2017 in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed, A, in the event that no debt service reserve fund is funded for the bonds, $27 million, or B, in the event that a debt service reserve fund is funded for the bonds, $29 million, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture, a master installment purchase agreement, a 2017 supplement thereto, a bond purchase agreement, and an official statement relating to an installment purchase, financing, and approving certain actions in connection therewith.
Read back is correct. Please call the roll.
Agency member Asker?
Yes.
Agency member DeHart?
Yes.
Agency member Booblaack?
Yes.
Agency member Jacob?
Yes.
Chair Soyseth?
Yes.
And that resolution passes as well. Chair will move to adjourn. Moved forward by Council, excuse me, Agency member Asker. Is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Chairman Soyseth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Returning now. Thank you so much. Those was unanimous. Returning now to regular agenda. Any matters too late for the agenda or non-agenda items? Any? None? Okay. Council items for future consideration. We have any that we're aware of at this point? No? Okay. Council comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, I just want, oops. I just want to apologize to everyone for the excessive recesses and stuff. I'm just not feeling good, but I'm working on it. Thank you.
Now, pray for restored health. Take care, Gil. Any other comments? I think it'd just be wise to, as Chief Amorfar alluded to earlier, just to give you a brief preview, I'm not going to get into any detail this evening, but you should, you should know, you need to know that this task force for traffic safety is proceeding full bore. In addition to the comments that the chief made, there was one additional that I'd like to include, that being that the school district is sending out a robocall to all parents in the district that goes out to about 20,000 homes. The purpose is the urgency of the actions that we're attempting to initiate and to sustain over a period of time in terms of the education of our citizens. School is out on Thursday, Friday. We're going to have a flood of young people on our streets, and the urgency, I think, at that point becomes obvious. With speed and improper lane changes, and people riding bikes on the wrong direction down the middle of city streets, we've got to gain, regain some sort of control in terms of the accidents involving motorists and either pedestrians or bicyclists. So the campaign has begun, and I would just encourage any and all people within Turlock, actually throughout our entire nation, just slow down. You're not going to get there appreciably faster, so just slow down, watch, stay off your phones. That's a habit I'm attempting to break right now. So we're all in this together, and be safe out there. We're going to have infinitely more children on the sidewalks and streets, on bicycles. Hold the speed down and watch the lane changes. That's the only comment I have. Any other comments from mayor or Councilmember Booblaack? Close your eyes and count to three. Don't wait. Okay, that's got to be there. Closed session. Do we have one?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're going to adjourn to consider item 12, A, B, and C on the regular agenda, all the relevant information is set forth on the agenda itself.
Thank you very much. Consider adjournment?
Moving.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for, it carries unanimously. Thank you for being here this evening. Appreciate your participation and your patience with me specifically. Have a great evening. Well, I started going downhill fast. I am s-